All right, everyone, we're going to open the meeting. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, and welcome to the September 9th, 2024 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, or ZBA. First, let me introduce the members of ZBA present here this evening, myself, Chairman Alan Donnelly, our Vice Chairman, Mr. Carl Hinger, our Secretary, Mr. Elijah Hewling is with us this evening, regular member Commissioner, Mr. Larry Rushmeyer is with us this evening, alternate member Commissioner, Mr. Liam Anea is with us this evening, and alternate member Commissioner, Mr. Michael Barnes is with us this evening. Our zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Fran Lally is with us this evening, and our always wonderful and absolutely excellent and professional recording secretary, Ms. Cassandra Varian is with us tonight. Absent tonight, regular member Commissioner, Mr. Richard Briggs. The current agenda can be found here at the table or on the town website under Board Meetings. When we begin the public hearing, I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call a property address, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail. After, the Secretary will read into the record any communications we received in favor or opposed to the application. The Chair will then entertain questions of clarification from board members concerning the application. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each set of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. After we've gone through all the cases on agenda tonight, we will close the public portion of the meeting and will deliberate and open executive session. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. All questions and comments must be directed through the Chair. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the Board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application, and in view of time constraints placed upon us, we assure and indulge us to not reiterate comments previously presented. You're welcome to stay until the end of the meeting or contact the Land Use Office in the morning. Thank you very much. Okay, first thing, Commissioner Barnes, will you please be on Z-24-52-32 Torrey Lane, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Anea, will you please be on Z-24-58-4T Road?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, review of minutes. I'd like to take a motion to approve the August 5th, 2024 minutes, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? I have a little bit on this. You got it?
Yeah.
Okay, um, kind of a couple of little things. Page three, line 144 through 146. Might jump around a little bit. Okay, um, not as sure exactly how to explain this one because the motions were correct in this, but then our Secretary, Mr. Hewling, made this stipulation on that particular one, and I believe the stipulation was seconded by Vice Chairman and Mr. Hinger. So whatever the best ways to put that in, if we could do that, thank you. The next one is page one, line 52. At the very end, we were drawing over the hardships of the property. It says the hardships of the property include three front yards, which is correct, due to the intersection and the building being a pre-existing non-conforming, and we did have safety on there as well, so I'd like to add that. Does everybody remember that one? Okay, and the last one is page four, line 162 through 165. This is an add, so right at the end, okay, you got second carried unanimously. This one, I'm not sure where to put it in there. I guess it's right there. It's Commissioner Rushmeyer. Commissioner Rushmeyer, let me know if this is correct. Stated that there were alternatives to bring the shed into compliance and was not in favor of the application. But there were alternatives. I didn't really see the explanation on there, so I thought we should add it. Does that sound correct, Commissioner?
It's okay, yeah.
And then on 166, kind of the same thing. Board agreed that the other solutions would not require variance. Vice, I did want to add on there because I thought it was important. Vice Chairman Hinger noted that there are no de minimis exceptions to which I agree. And I think that is it.
Um, the only thing I would, uh, your, I think you said 52, adding about safety, uh, on lines 62 and 63. She did put in there that...
Oh, okay, it's already there?
...and the reservation.
Oh. I need to catch it. No need to fix that one. Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary. I should have read before. I just looked right there, okay? Okay, so just the other two. Thank you very much. I'd like to take a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. So first thing, is there any questions, comments, anything on the correspondence, which is the minutes of other boards and commissions? Does anybody have anything? Commissioner Anea? No, it's nothing, okay. All right, continued public hearings. There are non-public hearings, none. Old business, there's none, so we're going to go into new business. Number one application is, I'll read it up right here. 32 Torrey Lane, that is Paul and Andrea Scialzo residence. The applicant agent is Mr. Kevin Keenan for Stony Hill Road. And that is a variance for a structure to the right sideline. Required dimension is 50 feet. Proposed dimension is 46'6". The variance requested would be 3'6", and that is regulation Article 3 dot 5. With the applicant or proponent of the applicant comes forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail, sir.
You don't want to make a mistake.
Whatever you want. You can have this chair.
Okay, I'll stand.
It's all yours. Or stand. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. My name's Kevin Keenan. My actual address is, I live in Sherman, Southern Southview Drive.
Okay.
I work for Paul Scialzo as a construction project manager. One of the items that Paul asked me to take care of was putting up a set of stairs, exterior stairs, to a room over his garage, and I...
This is on the back of the house, sir? Sorry to interrupt you. On the back of the house or...
It's on the front of the house. I can, I don't know how much you... This A2 survey will actually show what's going on. Just orienting, this is the cul-de-sac of Torrey Lane. So it's like right at the end of the cul-de-sac, his driveway is this way, and I just wanted to point out that you can't see the house from the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Is that correct?
No, you can't.
No, you can't, sir.
You cannot.
You were correct.
So Paul asked me to put a set of stairs in, exterior stairs, to a room over the garage that exists with the anticipation of his mother-in-law coming. I guess she was recently widowed and needed a place to stay. It was her request really to have, you know, alternate access. The access to the room over the garage is through the second floor of the house. There is no first floor access. So I started to prepare the building permit application thinking that everything was copacetic. And of course, I stopped right there when I realized that where he wants to put the stairs is 50.9 feet from the existing property lot. The architect that he hired to draw the plans was unaware of it and proceeded to extend the deck way out to avoid a gate going into the pool, which sits right there. In the submittal, I included sections, elevations, just so you get an idea of what's going on with the garage and what they originally proposed. I believe that's part of your application in the submittal. So you can see how it extends way out. I brought it back in to minimize the variance request. So we, the gate is going to be, I'm sorry, the deck is going to be above this gate, and there's still area for it to close and operate. So there's nothing, you know, no problems with bringing it closer to the garage. I was curious, though, when I was preparing it. It's like, you know, it's a 3.2-acre lot, you know? Why is there a need for a variance? You'd think that's such a large lot. The other submittal, and I looked at the lot, and the other submittal that I submitted was, this is actually the septic plan. And again, the cul-de-sac is out here. The house sits back here. This is the area that we're discussing. The slopes around here are extremely steep. The house was situated to sit on top of the slopes. Beyond the slopes down in this area is, are wetlands. The big thing is the septic area is right here. And I point all this out because the placement of the house, okay, was dictated by the septic system. Normally, it is in new construction on, you know, that are supported by septic, and the topography. So the hardship that I'm saying is that it was, the land is a hardship. It actually presents itself as what I refer to as a practical difficulty. Okay? So the positioning of the house caused it to be pushed up to within the minimum of a setback. I guess at the time, they did not anticipate putting in a set of stairs. But really, that's what dictated placement of the house. So that really is, in a nutshell, my argument for the variance was that the house placement, due to the site conditions, won't allow the proper setbacks for the stairs that we propose. The other thing that I just wanted to show you too was, this is from the town's website.
The GIS, is that the GIS thing?
Yes. Now, I didn't include this, but maybe I should, maybe I didn't. But what I want to point out is that this lot, in comparison to at least the ones you can see, and they're all pretty consistent, is a lot larger and it's due mainly to the slopes and also the wetlands. So I would submit that this is a unique feature of this lot that is not common with the rest of the neighborhood. I think...
Would I help you if I put it up on a big screen for you, sir?
Uh, no, actually, if you guys are, you know, good with it, then I'm good. So we have a lot that really is different from the other ones. It's not visible from the road, so the impact on the neighborhood of framing and putting in a set of stairs would be minimal. And I don't know what else to say. What else can I say? Questions?
Thank you, thank you very much, sir.
No problem.
Mr. Secretary, do we have any clear comments on this application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this time I'd like to ask if the commissioners have any questions.
I do. Was there consideration made? I see the stairs are on the south, south side of the house, sir.
Yes, yep.
Was there a consideration to expanding the deck slightly to the north and having the stairs go down towards the north? Behind the house. And that would not require a variance.
So you're saying locate the stairs in this vicinity here?
Correct.
South slash east, southeast?
Well, that would be the south side of the house.
It would be, it would be the south side. Yes, I did look at that.
Okay.
And I mentioned it, Paul, as an option. However, going back to my, the pool sits right below it.
I see that.
And the pool is actually down, as you saw.
I saw that.
There's a wall. The distance between the garage, edge of the garage, and that stone wall is about 38 inches.
Right.
Which would make for a very tight set of stairs.
Right, but if the staircase, if, depending on the width of the deck...
Right.
Can it wrap back on itself, the stairs? So that you don't hit that elevation issue?
Well, what we would be looking at is, instead of going this way, we would be going that way.
Or I.
And the problem is, is that once you get down to this vicinity here, being the back of the house...
Yes.
The only way down off that area is to go around through the pool and up the steps and out the gate. And you would have, of course, that would be your way in. You'd have to walk on the pool deck to get to the base of the stairs.
Oh, because this elevation shows that.
That's correct. You're right. You're absolutely right. And that's what I was saying, is that to go, to continue that deck that you're looking at...
Yeah.
That way...
Right.
To set it down onto the ground, you'd still be above the pool. And in order to access the stairs going up, going down, you'd have to enter the pool area.
Well, that's why I was saying have the stairs go half down, wrapped down, and come back under.
You know, we talked about it, and it's sort of a safety issue because then you're asking someone to, at night, coming home, don't want to disturb anybody, walking through the pool area. And though the pool would be covered or, you know, uncovered, I, we just thought it would be a hazard for people to be walking, you know, through the pool. And we wanted to keep it out, keep it away from the pool.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners?
The retain, that retaining wall you're saying is off the back of the house, which gives you a lower level for a pool patio?
There's actually two retaining walls. One off the driveway, then you have the pool, then the pool actually is, has a retaining wall, too.
Would there be any way to come down to that lower level and have a post come up to meet the staircase and bring it out to a normal width for a staircase?
This is on the south side of your property?
Correct. The problem with the stairs in the back, on the south side, is where it terminates, okay? You're going towards the house and down, and then you're going to have a platform. So, and actually, I should point out too, from that platform, there would have to be another set of stairs involved onto the pool deck. Either wooden stairs or... And once, the pool deck is a standard, you know, 42-inch wide sidewalk or walkway between this retaining wall and the edge of the pool. So the stairs come down, and if you turn the actual wood stairs around, you wouldn't have room. If you terminated down at the bottom, you know, a platform, you would still have to get off from that platform down to the pool deck. And all of that is still, you're still within the pool area, which we are looking to avoid.
Would it be possible to, I just need a little clarification about the fence that you mentioned?
Yes, good to show.
Is it possible to bring the stairs any closer? Or is the reason why there's that space so you could get to the snow steps?
Let me, let me reiterate. This is what we're not doing. These stairs were originally pushed out to avoid the gate, but on the application, I'm pushing it back. I'm doing the minimum of what I need for a set of stairs alongside that garage. So that's already been done, actually.
Okay.
Either proposal.
I have one other question unless somebody else has something.
Hold on, hold on.
So you're saying that this door at the back of the garage, the only way you can exit, get into that door is through the pool area?
No, that is actually, that door you're looking at is actually a door into the back of the garage.
Right.
But it sits about that high off of the area between the garage and the retaining wall for the pool.
So why wouldn't my wraparound work and enter under the deck?
That, basically, that door is not used, okay? So again, I wish I had the full set of plans. The house plans are even a picture. But again, when you go set of stairs this way, this being the rest of the back of the house, okay, you're dealing with a, what I say, a 38-inch area between the house and the top of the retaining wall.
Right.
And that extends over to the back of the house, all the way to, well, there's a patio near the, that you step down at the far end of the house, where you step down into the pool area.
Right.
So all of that, any, any...
So the deck's not going to be wide enough to wrap around like I'm talking about?
No.
That's, that's the simple answer.
I'll try and keep it simple.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Secretary, let me follow up on that. I'm good. Very brief, quick questions. I think you've answered most of them.
Okay.
I just want to note, note for the record that I just did check with the Land Use Office, and there's no other variances on file for 12, 14, 16, 18, 26, 28, or 30 Torrey Lane. Just did due diligence, just to see if anybody else had anything that might be similar, but there are none on file right now. Explain that, you did explain the hardships briefly, but your hardships, you're saying, is the wetlands, the septic, and...
Slopes.
And the slopes.
The slopes.
So the terrain of the property.
Correct.
Okay. May I just ask you a question I was going to have? Have you considered any alternatives? Like where you have it now on the south side, or is it possible to, I know your stairs have to be a certain width and everything like that. Is there any way to shrink it a little bit and do it? If you could shrink a little, is that a possibility?
You're talking inches, a couple inches. I mean...
It's that type?
There's a matter, I mean, minimum that you want on a set of stairs is 36 inches, you know, free walking area.
And that backside, if you did it that way, you've got 38, give or take?
You have 38, gross, if you will. So it's probably a little bit less after that. It's 42 inches overall is a good start to, you know, place to start with building stairs.
So none of those alternatives that the other commissioners asked you about, it's not really feasible to you, or it's just not as easy?
The problem is, I actually presented that to Paul going the opposite way, to stay away from that property line. But again, the problem is, is when those stairs go down and you're on this, basically, you're on top of the retaining wall at that point, and the pool is down below. To get from that platform where you, you know, the bottom of the stairs, around is kind of possible, but it's a little difficult. Yes, there's no space.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Anybody else need follow-up? Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none. Mr. Keenan, you have the final concluding remarks, sir. Say whatever you'd like.
I think that the commission can make a, you know, look at the factors, and the biggest thing is the terrain and the wetlands and the conditions that caused the house to be put where it is, and the septic system. And I push the septic system because you're locked in, you know, into a septic location, especially on a lot like this. Pretty tough. And, you know, again, we're trying to accommodate a relative, and, you know, we think that this is the best way to go.
I might have to ask you one more quick follow-up.
Sure.
So basically, this is to give egress from that, the second floor of the house, back onto the side, but you want to try to avoid going through the pool area?
And through the house, and through the house, too.
And through the house. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you very much. All right. At this time, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing on Z-24-52.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right.
I think I'll hang around if that's okay.
Absolutely, sir. We will deliberate and we'll come to an answer to this one.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our second application. All right, our second application is Z-24-58, and that is Jonas and Jane Santos residence. And that is 4T Road. And that is for a structure to the left sideline. Required dimension is 30 feet. Proposed dimension is 25 feet. Variance requested would be 5 feet. And that is Article 3 dot 5. For the applicant or proponent of the applicant, come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm Jane Santos, and that's my husband, Jonas Santos.
Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
After my father passed, we are from Brazil. After my father passed in 1995, you know, years later, I brought my mother. I was already living in the United States, and so is the rest of my family, brothers and sisters. So I brought my mom to live with me. And we do, we didn't have a big house enough because together with my mother, there was my single sister and my brother. So at my house, we lived, me, my husband, my brother, my mother, and my sister. So, but we used to accommodate him, you know? So my house, it's, it's not that big. I don't actually have a really second floor. I have a spiral staircase that goes upstairs. And the only thing upstairs, it's a bedroom with a bathroom. They used to be ours. And a small, little bedroom that I think when they built the house, it was sort of a nursery, I think, you know? So the baby would be close because of the size of the room, right? So when my mom came, me and my husband, we, you know, straightened up the basement. We moved ourselves to the basement so my brother would be upstairs with the bathroom with my sister. My brother, on the set, on the first floor, I only have one bathroom. And so everything was okay until recently, last year, March last year, my husband, my brother, who's going to be 70 this year, had a stroke. So he can no longer go upstairs because of, you know, the stroke. And my mom, it's going to be 92 this year, actually, next week. And she's doing okay. She's doing fine. She's in good health. But, you know, seeing that, you know, in the future, God only knows how long that future will be, that she won't longer be able to go up the stairs as well. So I'm thinking about, I need to build this one bedroom with a bathroom for her. It needs to be big enough so it would, you know, it need be maneuver a wheelchair, right? So it is proposed to be on the left side of the house because on the right side of the house, we have the septic. And on the back of the house, we do have this slope, you know? It's the way the, it is, it's much lower. We have a deck and then a set of stairs that goes down to the patio downstairs. So my neighbor, you know, my next neighbor, it's, his house is really far from mine. So the five feet, you know, shorter, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make me like on top of him, right? Because it's really, he's really far away. I spoke to him. He said he's fine, he's good. And this is it. That's what I'm looking for, you know? A few feet so I can give my mom some bedroom.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, there is communication.
Yeah. Mr. Secretary, could you read, please, your response and direct? We have a letter from a neighbor.
We, the undersigned residents of 3T Road, Brookfield, Connecticut, are writing to express our support for our neighbor's zoning application concerning the proposed amendment to Article 3.5 of the residential zoning regulations. This proposed change represents a reasonable and beneficial adjustment to the current zoning rules, reflecting a thoughtful approach to accommodating the evolving needs of homeowners while maintaining the integrity of our neighborhood. Our support for this application stems from a recognition of the importance of fostering a community where residents can make meaningful improvements to their homes while respecting the collective standards and values of the area. We are confident that the proposed addition will be a... We are confident that the proposed addition will be a harmonious and valuable enhancement to our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration of our support for this application. Best, Madison Harris and Ian Illick.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask if any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? This commissioner's...
What are the actual dimensions of the addition?
I don't remember. In my mind now.
I think I have that one. Twenty feet nine inches by thirteen feet six, does that sound right?
Yeah, that's all right, yes.
Twenty foot nine by, here's what I have. Twenty foot nine by thirteen six. About two hundred and eighty-four point two-four square feet. Is that right? No. Yeah, two eighty-four point two-four. Is that right? Okay, that was right. Mr. Restman?
I'm good.
You're good? Mr. Secretary?
Nothing currently.
Commissioner, you?
I think it might be worth mentioning in the record that those plans were sent to us maybe a little bit after the, we received the packets, and, you know, you could have printed it out, but it would have been good to have those in the packet before that.
I don't have any questions.
I, I just have a couple, I drew a little map here, thank you very much for allowing me to go up to your property. You wanna come forward, I just wanna show you this and tell me if this looks correct to you? Hello, Mrs. Santos? Okay, looks like your house, and the addition is right here, so it's twenty feet nine inches by thirteen feet six, right?
Yeah, that's correct, because you have, have a wood deck here, about six feet, remove that deck, then it should be a cross space, then slowly tighten to cross space to, for the water line and everything, because there is existing bathroom right here.
Okay.
Then slowly we tight everything there.
Okay, and you got a kind of a big shed there, and a little shed there.
There's a little shed there.
That's what I drew, and it's all woodlands over there, and then we have some rocks and boulders and stuff like that.
Yes.
And then, there's a slight downhill going this way, I guessed at twenty-five, thirty percent, heading that way, is that, is that close?
Because, because we'll be, yeah, we'll be, that should have enough space there, because of the line there.
Okay.
The one place it was very tight was here, on the side.
Just dumb question, I'm not a builder or anything, but did you consider using, you have, I'm talking on the backside of the house, the northern side of the house here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Did you consider using this, and I measured it over, it was about five foot six, you may not wanna go up to the edge, but did you consider using, using any of this area for your addition? That would maybe shorten this. So, this area, kinda, I kinda dotted lined it, so it's on the northern side, so that space between your window and the back wall there, it's about five foot six, that's what I measured.
It would cost us a lot of money, because we got the air conditioning, we have the, what you call, the electrical, electric there, it would be, everything would be...
So, it would just be, so you thought about it, just...
Yeah, I thought about it, yes.
To do it that way there?
Yeah, because we have the air conditioning, we have to move the whole system, then house, you have the electrical service.
Not sorry.
Okay. Here's another one. Did you consider maybe making the addition a little bit smaller? This would put it in compliance, twenty by nine by eight foot six, which would be about one hundred and seventy-nine point seven four square feet. So, did you consider that? All right, you know what, I'll make it a little bit smaller, then I don't need a variance at all.
We, we thought about it, the thing is, I need to have a bedroom big enough to fit two, two beds, because my sister sleeps in the same bedroom that my mom, and like I said before, you know, needs to be big enough to maneuver a wheelchair and, you know...
Twenty by nine by eight foot, eight point six, it's not enough, in your opinion? That's one hundred and seventy-nine point seven four. You can say yes.
So, it would be short enough, and the thirteen feet would be short enough, right? We can bring...
You know, I'm not good with those numbers, if you say that.
It just means shrink it a little bit. It just means shrink it a little bit.
It's like you're talking Chinese to me.
Okay.
And, but when my husband showed me, you know, where he would have to go, I said, "But, but that's too small, how can I, you know..."
All right, would it be possible, and you can say yes or no, but would it be possible if the variance was slightly smaller, okay, stipulated maybe two foot six, which equals, I'm just gonna go over the numbers, but that's eleven foot by twenty point nine, which would be two hundred and twenty-nine point nine square feet. So, instead of the original two hundred and eighty-four point two-four, maybe just a little, a little bit, not, not a lot, but...
Okay.
I don't know what the commissioners are gonna do, or, you know, who wants to put, is that a possibility?
It's a possibility.
So, instead of asking for five feet, right? You mean...
Half.
Half? Two and a half?
Yeah, two and a half.
Right, so we could bring...
To bring it, is thirteen nine, I think we bring that to twelve?
Eleven, it would be eleven by twenty point nine. So, instead of, I'm gonna go, I'll go by the square footage, the size you want is approximately two hundred and eighty-four point two-four square feet, and then this would be, my suggestion would be two hundred and twenty-nine point nine, call it two thirty. A little bit of a difference.
A little bit.
It's a little bit, it's just like in the side, you're just...
You're talking about shorting here?
Um...
Shorting, this is thirteen six, and you're saying shorting here?
Thirteen six.
Because then...
Yeah, shorten this, this thirteen.
Right, so you're making the room more narrow.
A little bit.
The door is already right here, right?
So, it would...
I don't...
Crunch it all over, I'm not an architect.
Yeah, I mean, if this is thirteen, if we're, if we're doing, if you're taking off two feet, that's probably not much more than two feet, I mean, Larry, you probably, you may have a better idea than him, but it doesn't look like it's much more than two feet, which I understand is not to scale, but if this whole thing is thirteen, I don't know if you're gonna have a door.
That's, that's okay, that's good enough. Last, last thing I wanted to note for the record, I also did check the neighborhood around you as well, and number two, six, three, five, and seventeen Road do not have any variances on file. I just wanted to let you guys know that and note that for the record. Okay. Thank you very, very much. Any other commissioners?
Thank you.
Have any questions for the applicant?
No.
Can you make follow-up? All right, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none. And you have the final concluding remarks, you say whatever you'd like.
Thank you. I just wanna say that I hope I'm not asking you guys too much, you know, and if it is, I will understand that I need to be in compliance with the town's rules, and I'm just hoping for the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask to close, I'd like to ask for a motion to close Z-24-58 to public hearing. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, I'll explain what we're gonna do now, we're gonna go into its closed operations, we basically discussed the applications amongst ourselves, we'll come to a decision, we ask that you don't speak or chime in or anything, and thank you very much for your patience, appreciate it. All right. All right, I would like to take a motion to approve application Z-24-52.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. And this is the Paul and Andrea Scalzo residence, Kevin Keenan is here to speak on the behalf, I'll go over the variance again, it's a structure to the right sideline, prior dimension is fifty feet, proposed dimension is forty-six six, variance requested would be three feet six inches, and it's Article 3.5. Who would like to go first?
I initially had the same questions that Mike did, but I think that the explanation behind it was good enough for me, and just that the ledge itself is really too small to have a single direction staircase, and the loop back would be too small for the width of the deck that there requesting, that was definitely something, coming in, that was something that...
You had thirty-eight inches or something to work with, right?
Right. I mean, like, is it billable? Well, maybe, but it seems a little, I feel like unsafe to have, if, if you did do it in the back, to have to go down, you know, through the gate into the pool, step back up the retaining wall, and up, like, it seems like way too much of a hassle to be of any practical use.
And how'd you feel on the hardships?
I mean, the hardships make a lot of sense, obviously, the land is...
That's why they had to place the house there in the first place.
Right, you, there's not a lot of, it's a big property, but there's really not a lot of workable land on it, you're kind of backed into the corner with how you're constructing anything.
Over to that property line.
So, and it's also worth noting, I think that the, there's no neighbor, the property line doesn't have a neighbor.
That's all woods.
You're not in, like, yeah, it's all woods, you're not encroaching on, like, a neighbor's house or anything like that, either.
Thank you.
I would share Carl's, Carl's comments, and also would add that considering it's going to be mother-in-law, we might be considering an elderly person going down on the pool deck, maybe it's wet, maybe it's outside, I have...
So, you're thinking safety?
I'm thinking safety considerations, also, I live a few streets up from here, and have exactly the same kind of issues with my property, where I have three and a half acres bisected by wetlands on a steep slope. So, I understand, and my house is the same as this one, it's way up in the corner of the property, so...
It's the only place they could put it, right?
It was the only place they could put it.
Because of the topography.
And, and the only, you know, the only other alternative was losing a bay at a garage to access it, so I just don't see that as a proper alternative.
Mr. Secretary?
For the most part, I agree with Carl and Michael, I hesitate to bring in the fact that it's an elderly person or anything like that, I don't...
Yeah, it must be a hardship of the land.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I don't think it's something that we can really consider. As far as safety too, which Carl pointed out, I would say having a second point of egress from the second floor is also...
I was thinking the same thing.
Is also good as far as safety.
Yeah.
If there was some kind of emergency. Also, the limited variance of just over three feet, I take that into account, I don't think it's egregious, and like was already mentioned, it doesn't impose on neighbors, and I think we have a handful of hardships that are listed that I can...
Topography.
Yeah, topography.
Slope.
Slope.
Septic.
And safety.
And safety. Christian Restman?
I think the septic system and the house, its sighting and original concept to be built, probably wasn't even a thought in anybody's mind about a staircase being that close. The property line does move more to, I would assume it's to the east, as the property line goes out towards front of the house, so if the house was rotated a little more, you would pick up that distance. I think that there are other alternatives to turn the staircase possibly, and I'm, I'm shooting from the hip here...
Like Commissioner Barnes was mentioning?
And turn it into the garage, so you would have to enter the garage, come out of the garage, and go up the stairs. Those kinds of options are there. Are they feasible? I don't know, but there are options. With that said, I'd probably be inclined to agree with the application.
Thank you, Commissioner. I agree with everybody here, topography's definitely an issue there, you can tell by looking at, if you're looking at GIS, it's kind of shaped like Oklahoma there, but where they had to put the house because of the septic and the topography and everything else, it was kind of like your house, like you were saying, there was no other place to put it on the property, and it is a hardship of the land. I'm inclined to agree, the septic, yes, it's a hardship on it, but I, I think topography is really the biggest, biggest thing that I see there, and, and safety is an issue. Having a second point of egress from the second floor in the back of the house, there's a fire or something, God forbid like that, you want a way out of there safely to get out, so I'm inclined to approve it. Is everybody ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of approving Z-24-52, that is the Paul and Andrea Scalzo residence, 32 Tory Lane, and that is for a structure to the right sideline, that is, required dimension is fifty feet, proposed dimension is forty-six feet six inches, variance requested is three feet six inches, and that is Article 3.5, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I would just stipulate staircase.
Oh, thank you very much. Do I have a second on a stipulation? This is for a staircase only.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it really doesn't... Yeah, so stipulation, we can do a tight stipulation on it, right Fran?
Yeah.
Okay, so the secretary has made a stipulation of a staircase only. Mr. Vice-Chancellor, you second on that?
Yeah, I mean, this, I just wanna make sure we're not overstepping the plans here, the way it was the, with the way it's set up...
Is the edge of the, the deck...
Deck also in...
Yes.
Like, I don't stipulate staircase, and then we...
The edge of the deck is out that far also.
Because the, yeah, it'd have to be a staircase and deck.
The terrace.
And that's actually what's on the application.
Right, yeah, it's also stairs, expand that.
Okay, so do we need that stipulation?
No.
It says staircase and deck, so we're good. All right, can you start one more time? All right, all those, all those in favor to approve Z-24-52, structure to the right sideline, and that's deck and staircase, required dimension's fifty feet, proposed dimension's forty-six feet six inches, variance requested is three feet six inches, and that is Article 3.5, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay? It's unanimous. Nick, congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay.
Never find me? Yes, I do.
All right, moving on to our next application. I'll take a motion to approve application Z-24-58, dash fifty-eight, and that is Jonas and Jane Santos residence, 4 T Road, and that is for an addition, required dimension is thirty feet, proposed dimension is twenty-five feet, the variance requested would be five feet, and that is Article 3.5, I'd like to take a motion to approve that as submitted.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Who would like to go first on this one? Christian Restman, or Christian? You're on this, right, Christian?
Yes. I would be, I'd be inclined to support for two reasons, it's the slope in the backyard, the septic on the right side of the house, and I think that would present a safety issue if they were to try to extend in the back area where they have the HVAC and electrical equipments, if they had to, if they had to move any of those systems, I could see that being potentially dangerous, and I think this one space on the left side of the house is, is appropriate.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Restman?
I do think that there's alternatives, both in shrinking the size of the room, or moving it around the back, I just think there are, I think there are options, so under that, I would probably be against it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Secretary?
I have both pros and cons, so not a hundred percent yet. I agree with Commissioner Anea, I also appreciate that I think they went to as small a variance as is reasonable, just looking at the size of the room and what their, what they're gonna stick with, the size of the room, I don't know that it could really get much smaller, even what we were saying about the two and a half feet, we can still make a room that they could enter. I agree with Commissioner Anea with stated hardships as far as topography, septic, and the existing units that they have on the backside of the house.
The AC units, right?
Yeah, the AC and electrical, correct. At the same time, I also struggle with the fact this is a creative hardship.
Self-imposed.
Yeah, and I... Um, yeah, and I understand the why, but just like I was saying in the last case, I can't, I don't think it's in our purview to take into account what they're going to use the space for, it's just they want a variance, does it meet our requirements? And in, in that sense, I still have an issue, and I agree with Commissioner Rushmeyer, I think there are alternatives. I think if, uh, you can make the room smaller, but you have to completely adjust how the room's gonna be set up as far as the full bath, full shower.
Redesign the layout.
Exactly, yeah. I think that if you do that, I think you can make it fit, you can cut off five feet. Um, so I'm still a little back and forth.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice Chairman? Yeah, I, I, I agree with most of the sentiment that's been said. I think there is room to cut back on the requesting variance a bit. I don't know if you can eliminate it entirely or not, because that can not mark tech as far as trying to design a room. Um, I, I do think you could, um, like you, uh, you had proposed, Mr. Chairman, at least two and a half feet and rearrange some things to make it fit, um, but between the other options, and that, I think there is a way to give this variance more in compliance, and because I don't know exactly what that would work with, I'm leaning towards declining it, so that you reconsider, they can go back to the drawing board and reconsider other options, whether it's, uh, as Larry said, move it in the back of the house, or find a way to make it fit, or come back here and say, hey, we actually need one for that house. But I, I, I think there are other options, so I don't know if it needs to be a big deal.
I...
It comes to us.
Yeah, I agree with everybody here, even Commissioner Ania on the hardships, but I believe that there are options. On the north side of the property, they can look at it, and I realized that there's an expense, that the HVAC was there, the electrical was coming in there, but that's an expense that has nothing to do with us. Um, and there's room there, that's five foot six by fourteen feet. Or part of it, you know, maybe make it a little bit shorter, because the electrical was jammed up right in the corner there, maybe they could do it. But, but there's alternatives. So, I mean, I think, I feel exactly like all the other commissioners, I'm inclined to...
I would, I would push back a little bit on minimizing the variance, because I would argue that they could have come in with a ten or fifteen foot variance, and then we say, let's move it down to five, it's okay deal. Instead, I think they came with as minimal a variance, again, based on the, the rough sketches that we have, a minimal, uh, to do what they feel they need to do. And I would also suggest too, that, uh, while I don't wanna consider necessarily what the variance is being used for, but technically it is for them a safety issue of having people on one floor because they can't go up and downstairs safely.
The staircase, where it's very suspicious.
Well, any staircase, probably, with that age or with the ailments that some of the people in the house are dealing with, which again, is not wholeheartedly in our purview, and I only bring it up to say that I think that it is a safety issue for them, and it's not necessarily we can say it's gonna be older people, but it is a safety issue for, uh, in this case, a safety issue trying to go up and downstairs and not have anybody upstairs.
Do you think it's possible, I'm just gonna ask you a question, to, to revise this layout of this plan, or even steal, even if they needed, because I'm talking electrical here, but the electrical, if you need three feet by code, if they cut this fourteen feet they got here, that's another eleven feet they could come out and add on to this, and, you know, they could bring this all the way across, but are there other options?
Well, I, I would, I would argue yes, but at the same time, I think there's other options, and ninety percent of the cases that we allow a variance for. Is there, is there a hardship? Do we understand the hardship? Do we necessarily agree with the hardship and say, okay, you know what, this, we can make an exception for this? And I think overall, um, I think I'm more leaning towards agreeing with Mr. Ania, that I think this is a hardship, and the plan in general is something that I can agree with.
Thank you very much. Any other? Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you bring up some good points, Elijah. Uh, I, I mean, they, they really are, I know that as we've said at length in past cases, that there's no, you know, de minimis exception, but they definitely did come asking for the bare minimum they need. They did, they didn't show up and say, hey, we wanna go to the property line or anything.
Yeah.
Like, so I, I, I do, I do agree with you on that. I'm, I'm really torn on this one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm torn too. I'm very torn, I see, I see hardships on the property, uh, but I'm torn, and I know that because it's a little bit more expensive or something to maybe go to the northern side or take a section and redesign it out there, that financially, we cannot consider that at all.
I agree with Liam too, that that's still could be a safety risk as far as moving all of that, and where you're gonna move it to. And I would also, again, oh, go ahead Larry.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
The, the safety in moving a utility has nothing to do with the homeowner, it's done by a licensed electrician and, and ever source, so those, those are like out of the picture. Remember that the variance goes to the property, not to the people who are living in it.
Right, I agree.
The other thing I was gonna say is, uh, we keep talking about maybe making a little bit, uh, the variance a little bit less, but is, are we saying that two and a half feet is gonna make a difference between approving and denying? Is that making a big difference for us, if, if they can cut back the room two and a half feet, or, or two feet, or, you know, I don't think there's any magic number, I think five is, is, is pretty minimal. And again, like I, I repeat myself again, but I think they came in with, you know, as little as they could, trying to make the footprint as small as possible.
Yeah, when I did, besides going out and looking at it, and when, when I did the simple math on it, I said, okay, what, what would the size of the additional be if they didn't need a variance? Okay, and that's how I came up with the first number, which was one seventy-nine dot seventy-four, which they said, hey, that's too small for what we wanna do, it just doesn't work. And then I, then I also did the math at, okay, let's say the variance was half the size, uh, because I know if we do find a hardship on it, it's, and granted variance, it should be the smallest variance possible, because it goes with the land forever. Uh, and that's why I did the eleven by twenty point nine, which brought it to, to twenty-nine point nine square feet. And I, I believe the gentleman, if I understood him correctly, Mr. Santos said that that was a possibility with him. But that's, I don't know. I'm torn on this one, I'm definitely torn. Does that, if it were smaller, Commissioner Rushmeyer, say half the size, same, still think the same is...
I agree with, uh, it, it, they came in with what they felt was a very minimum ask, so I think by, by diminishing that minimum risk by, or the minimum ask by half doesn't change the outcome of the...
There, there have the hardships and...
And, and, and I don't see that, and again, I really believe that there are other ways, whether it takes an architect or a design person or whatever, to get them what they want without a variance.
But, I, I mean, just to devil's advocate that, couldn't we say that about the last application? I mean, this is still a matter of topography in the back.
A staircase and a...
Trying to squeeze in a couple feet.
A staircase and an addition, to me, are very different.
I, I mean, they are, but there, there's always, I think, with all the applications that come before us, some way, uh, someone mentioned, some way to squeeze it in, some way an architect might figure it out within, but we're dealing with the hypothetical that we...
We've had applications where, uh, you know, we're at a foot and we don't see the hardship on it, somehow they figure out a way to do it.
Right.
You know, within, within the regulation.
Yeah, it, it just seems to me that i- if you go up, if you come with the idea that, well, there's something that can, I'm sure someone can, someone else can think of something that can be done, then you would never approve any variance, because, well, surely someone could figure it out without needing it, and I, I don't think that's necessarily, I, I, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from, but... That, and at some extent, there does become a point where it's really not feasible to, like, like we mentioned with the, the stairs and the deck, and, well, yeah, maybe it can do this or that or the other.
But work it around that.
But to that point, it turns into really just nonsense and hypotheticals.
I have a question for you. When you said that it's hard to see that how this isn't, uh, you know, kinda self-imposed, what, what exactly do you mean by that?
Well, I mean, they're, you're creating an addition when technically speaking, you don't have to have one.
Yeah, that's, that's true, it's, it's, what, as is, it's a three-bedroom house already.
Right, but she explained that, you know, the upstairs got the little nursery and a kind of small...
Right, but that, that, the, the self-imposed hardship, like he says, is the fact that you're, i- it's a hardship of how many people you have in a house of X size.
If you made it a little bit smaller, there would be no self-imposed hardship, because they wouldn't need a variance, but that's, I tend to agree with Commissioner Rushmeyer. Do you have anything else on this, Commissioner Ania?
I don't think so, sir, I'm, I'm a little bit torn now, after, I, my mind has changed a little bit by what Commissioner Rushmeyer said about, um, the safety of, of moving some of that equipment.
Any else, Mr. Secretary?
No, sir.
Do you have control of voting?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of approving Z dash twenty-four dash fifty-eight, and that is a Jonas and Jane Santos residence, fourteen Road, and that was for a structure to the left sideline, required dimension is thirty feet, proposed dimension is twenty-five feet, the variance requested is five feet, and that is Article three dot five. Say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Nay. The motion fails, uh, four to one, one to four. Thank you very much, thank you very much, have a good evening. All right, uh, there's really no informal discussion, although I wanted to say that I was gonna ask Chairwoman Fox to come, but they got hammered from the floods, so it's not a good month to come and give this addition.
They're not the only ones that got hammered from the floods.
Yeah, everybody got hammered from the floods. Yeah, Oscar, what, fifteen inches? Does anybody? Yes.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any informal discussion at all? More formal discussion?
It, it wouldn't pertain directly to our board, I know there's, there's something that, uh, potential moratorium being explored, um, eight thirty G, I don't know if, if his own commission is taking that up this month, or if it was the board's selection, but I did hear about something.
They're doing that this Thursday night at the high school.
Their plan is to have it on the twelfth, yeah.
Isn't that the high school this Thursday?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, high school, yeah.
It doesn't pertain to eight thirty G.
Oh.
Yeah, it's just a moratorium on...
Yeah.